Richland Town Hall. At the Richland Community Center. Be part of the discussion or send your questions before the meeting. Richland Town Hall. Learn about the city budget, programs, projects, and priorities. Richland Town Hall.
Good evening, everyone. We are here live tonight in the beautiful Richland Community Center. And we are here tonight for the Richland Town Hall 2017, where we're going to spend the next hour reviewing the city's plans for the coming year 2018, as well as taking a preliminary look at the upcoming 2018 budget. The discussion tonight, we have members of the executive leadership team of the city of Richland here to talk about the various components of the proposed budget and some of the key projects that are on the horizon for the city of Richland in the coming year 2018. My name is Jim Hall, and it's a pleasure for me to join you tonight. And we have some folks who have come out on a Wednesday evening or Thursday evening here in the Tri-Cities to learn a little bit more about the upcoming year as it involves their city, the city of Richland. We want to begin, we have a lot of city residents here with us tonight. We also have members of the city of Richland's executive leadership team with us. And so I'm going to introduce them. We have a number of them on hand, including city manager Cindy Rents is here, right in the front row. John Ommenson, who is the assistant city manager. Brandon Allen is the director of finance. Bob Hammond, Richland Energy Services Director. Tom Huntington is the Fire and Emergency Services Director. Kirwin Jensen is the community development director for the city. Human Resources Director Allison Jobb is here with us tonight, as is city attorney Heather Kinsley. Kathleen Koch, Administrative Services Director. Pete Rigalski, the Public Works Director. Parks and Public Facilities Director Joe Schissel is here with us tonight. And finally, we have the Police Services Director, Mr. Chris Skinner here. So Chris and all of the members of the executive leadership team, we appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight. And later in the evening, we are going to be opening up for questions from members of our audience, and they will be addressing some of the budget and project-related issues, and we'll be directing those to you before we leave the air tonight. But first, we're going to get a perspective from the city council of the city of Richland. And with that, we'll introduce Mayor Bob Thompson. Mayor Thompson.
Thank you so much. You know, I look at the banners that surround us here, and Richland is a unique community. You know, I had the pleasure of growing up in the city of Richland, and it was the most egalitarian town in the world. And when I say that, I mean everybody's idea has merit, because there was no class. There was no wealth to speak of. It was a unique place where, when I have a chance to travel, and I go down south, you go to galvanize support when you're down south to the Baptist Church and talk to local elected leaders like that. You don't do that in Richland. Everybody's ideas are as good as the next guy's, because there was no class. Whether you were a pipe fitter, a doctor, an attorney, or just simply a laborer, you made about the same amount of money. Not everybody had that experience growing up, but it has carried through to Richland being a very, very unique place. And in a lot of ways, a very special place. The city has changed. Population obviously has changed. You know, I look at what we do, the services we have, but there are some things that haven't changed. And that's being a full-service community. Richland's unique in a lot of ways, not only based on the population it has and the people that came here back during the Manhattan era, but look at it from a perspective of the knowledge base that we had and the things that we've been able to accomplish as a community. When I say "full service," Richland does things differently than our other communities. Our budget is bigger as a direct result. You're going to hear that laid out this very evening. Understand that Richland has an electrical utility. Whoa, nobody else has their electrical utility here in the Tri-Cities, right? You have Benton County PUD or Franklin County PUD. Our rates are cheaper. Bob Hammond over here will have a chance to explain that. Somewhere, rates go up based on BPA wholesale adjustments. But the truth is, we are a unique community. We have a library system. If you're in Kennebec Pass, you're serviced by the Mid-Columbia Library System, right? Not in the city of Richland. We take pride in having probably the best library services in eastern Washington, maybe in the state of Washington. I mean, it's subject to debate. But again, those are things that we do that are so different than everybody else. You know, we do our own, what do we say? We pick up our own garbage. You don't do that in any other communities, do you? Richland is a unique, diverse place where things get done on time and expense. And it starts with the budget process. So we have a budget process. It starts in the middle of the year. You know, that's kind of, it's amazing. Council drives policy, and based on what council decides to do, policy is created, and we implement that, and we hand it off to city rents. And you get together with your department heads and go through a process. And it's a half-year-long process, right? And it's kind of amazing how everything kind of falls in line. Because if you look at the number of awards that the city of Richland has got over the years in regards to its budgeting process and its transparency, that's the other thing that people don't realize. You can go to the public library, you can go online and see what the heck we're doing. It's right there. It's pretty transparent. I hear sometimes that we're not as transparent as we need to be. People have to occasionally engage to find out information. You can't give everybody everything they want. Sometimes people have to actually go out and look at the services that we provide and the access that we actually have provided to individuals. Now Cindy does a great job in regards to getting these people together to create a budget. But truly, the department heads every year got to figure out, "Well, we did it last year. How do we do it this year?" You know, council drives a pretty hard bargain. We don't want to raise our costs if we don't have to. And that's a challenge, isn't it, in today's economy? You know, inflation's out to 2.5%. Richland probably, well, I can't remember the exact year, but once in the last 20 years have raised more than 1% property tax, which is allowed, and we bank the rest? Who else does that? The truth is, nobody else does that. Why? Because we're damn good at what we do. And people don't really appreciate how good the city is in a lot of ways. But the truth is, we are head and shoulders above the other local communities that we have. And frankly, it's the hard work that staff does that. I'd like to take all the credit in the world, but that's all bogus. It's not. We have the ability to have the best people in the world work for us. I want to introduce a couple of people that are here this evening, my fellow council members. Sandra, if you could stand up. Dory, if you could stand up. Phil, if you could stand up. I know Terry's here somewhere. He's right in front like usual, because, you know, he gives support to Cindy. I know how that works. Anyway, you know, that's my portion of the thing. I always go over time, because I just like to talk. But I'm so darn proud of the city and what it's been able to accomplish. Think about it. Where would you rather live in the Tri-Cities? Frankly, where would you rather live in eastern Washington? Frankly, where would you ever live in the state of Washington? Jim, it's off to you.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. And continuing on that theme throughout the program tonight, we want to share some information with you that I know some of the things that I will be sharing momentarily, I wasn't aware of until I was reading over in preparation, but some statistics and some of the services that, as Mayor Thompson said, that are unique to the community of Richland. And so throughout the course of the program, and I may just have you shout out a guess on some of the questions that we're going to be sharing. But look up at the screen, and I will read right along with you. But in 2018, this is another milestone year is coming up, is the city will be celebrating its 60th anniversary. Who can tell me who was the mayor of Richland in 1958? Anybody? Not Bob Thompson. The answer is Pat Merrill. The answer is Pat Merrill. How many square miles does the city currently encompass in square miles? Just shout out a guess. 30? Higher? 42. You missed it by .16. The answer, 42.16 square miles. Now, has anybody ever seen an alphabet house? Richland is certainly known for that. What model was the only one that had four bedrooms? Anybody know that? Their Hanford history? Not quite. Back up the alphabet a little bit. The answer is the L House, and there were 44 of them built. Be interesting to see how many of those have more than four bedrooms today. Richland Energy Services has approximately how many miles of distribution lines? The answer, 530 miles, and I'm told that that's enough cable to stretch from the Tri-Cities to Bozeman, Montana. How many reference questions has our library staff answered so far in 2017? We're covering a lot of ground tonight, folks. The answer, and that's just so far this year, 19,713. And finally, through this part of our program, Richland maintains how many land miles, land miles of road infrastructure? The answer, 590. So a lot of public works going on here in the city of Richland. And tonight, that's what we're here to talk about, is how it's going to be funded, the projects that it will be encompassing, and among other things, a lot of preparation, as the mayor said, going into preparing for the upcoming budget. At this point, we're going to go to some video that has been prepared regarding the upcoming city budget process, and that will feature your city manager Cindy Rents.
The city of Richland, Washington. 60 years ago, our citizens came together to reincorporate our community into a first-class city. We all know the history of the Manhattan Project and how this tiny town grew almost overnight to house the expanding population. Then the boom and bust years of a new community trying to grow into an independent city. Through good times and challenging times, Richland has remained a vibrant and progressive community built on the values of teamwork, integrity, and excellence. This is Richland, 60 years and building to the future. Hi, I'm Cindy Rents, Richland City Manager, and I am proud of our city and our dedicated employees that provide a multitude of services to a diverse population. For the 2018 budget, I'm particularly excited to highlight some of our programs and services that you may not be aware of. The city receives grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and uses these funds to benefit low-to-moderate income individuals and families with programs such as affordable housing, down payment assistance, residential rehab loans, and funding for nonprofit agencies that provide services to our city. In 2017, a total of 555 residents received direct financial assistance, and another 7,268 residents benefited from public facility programs funded by HUD. This included resources that were provided for services related to substance abuse for at-risk citizens, assistance for disabled adults to allow them to participate in summer therapeutic activities, hot meals provided to nearly 40,000 seniors through Meals on Wheels, and 29 new Americans with Disabilities certified crosswalk ramps were installed in locations throughout our city. What excites me even more than administering this grant funding is the fact that city staff take great pride in helping individuals with basic needs. One way that is done is by offering discounted utility rates to qualifying citizens that are low-income. To date this year, the city has provided $160,000 in utility payment assistance. In addition, Richland citizens may donate to our Helping Hands program so that qualified households can request assistance with heating costs once a year. Our electric utility conservation program is available to all citizens. In 2016, we provided $694,000 in loans, and 2017 is on a very similar track. The 2018 budget includes an additional $400,000 to the loan program, as we know conservation is very important to our citizens. The Richland Police Department is committed to maintaining a strong relationship with citizens and a constant presence in our community so that residents can feel safe. Some of these ways are by deploying programs such as Coffee with a Cop and Cops and Kids, which also allows us to connect with kids in need. We make those connections by placing police officers in our schools, and we offer much-needed training and information to parents on internet safety through our Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Our city fire department works hard to protect and enhance the quality of life in Richland. Nearly half of the department's medical responses are for customers over age 65. Often, the 911 system becomes a primary health care call for those who just don't know what services are out there. In these cases, staff engage social and medical service organizations to help patients find long-term care that is needed. Staff partners with our schools to offer mentoring programs for at-risk kids and through its Operation Worm program, supplying winter coats to many school kids throughout the district. Fire and emergency staff even provide and install smoke detectors for low-income or senior residents who may request it. We continue to make it a priority to improve the sense of safety throughout our city. The proposed budget includes several public safety requests that position us to respond well in case of an emergency, including increases to public safety staffing, new equipment for police and fire, lighting control upgrades to Horn Rapids Athletic Complex and Columbia Playfields, which provides a single-city-wide system that can be controlled remotely, and additional seasonal staff for ADA sidewalk ramp installations. Beyond the basic needs, the city provides free or low-cost services and programs to citizens in places like the library, community center, golf course, pools, parks, trails, and many other locations. The library alone is an amazing resource. The new Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, or STEAM space, is programmed with hands-on learning opportunities and represents how the city continues to reinvent public spaces and respond to changing times. As stewards of the community's money, we do what we can to fund economic development. Over the last several years, private developers and small businesses have continued to invest in the city's central business district. New hotels, retail outlets, and restaurants are now a part of Richland's landscape. When businesses thrive, so does our community. In the 2018 budget, these forward-thinking investments will continue. Construction has begun on Richland's new city hall, Swift Corridor, and when completed in 2019, we'll move staff from three aging facilities into a one-stop shop. Richland City Council and city staff work hard to be fiscally responsible and conservative to maintain the same or higher level of service, take care of what we already have, and plan for improvements and enhancements each year. The 2018 budget is proposed to do just that. Approximately $285 million in services, revenues, and expenditures make up this budget. That represents a 7.4% increase over 2017, primarily due to capital outlay and a focus on the growing demand for service delivery. The allowable 1% property tax will not be enacted and instead held for future consideration. Assessed property values continue to climb and is estimated at $6.2 billion, while the levy tax rate remains the same as 2017 and has remained fairly static since 2009. No rate increases are planned for water, sewer, solid waste, or stormwater utilities. A council-approved electrical rate increase of 6.5% will be effective January 2018. This increase is mostly driven by Bonneville Power Administration wholesale power increases that the city has experienced over the last several years. The city's electric rates are set to cover operating costs on an annual basis with fund reserves set very low compared to other electric utilities. We continue to attract new businesses with approximately 1,000 new business licenses each year. In the last 10 years, the retail sales tax category has seen at least a 5% increase from year to year, which is partially attributed to the new businesses that we continue to see opening in the community. The city also received more applications in 2017 for its business support programs such as the Business License Reserve Fund and Commercial Improvement Program, which has resulted in increased redevelopment of core business areas. Development in the southern part of the city continues to be strong. Preliminary plans for five subdivisions that will ultimately contain 540 new homes were approved in the first three quarters of 2017, indicating the demand for new single-family homes will continue. The 2018 proposed budget includes an important transportation study, which will plan for long-term anticipated growth in our region. The study will help Richland and its local partners to identify the most important system improvements to deal with congestion due to regional travel patterns. 2018 will be the first year of delivering an improved payment preservation program, bolstered with new funding through the Richland Transportation Benefit District. Residents in all areas of the city will see increased service delivery in 2018 as this program stretches to improve the city's street conditions. 2018 will also see construction begin on the long-awaited Dupertail Bridge. Once completed, the bridge will provide needed connectivity to downtown, improve economic development opportunities, decrease traffic congestion, and allow better public safety access. Regional dispatching has been a key strategy for several years, and in 2017, the region made great strides in transitioning the city of Pasco and Franklin County dispatching services to our Southeast Communications Center, or CCOM, which is managed by Richland. Six dispatched positions were added in 2017, and we anticipate additional needs in 2018 once the transition is complete. By agreement, Franklin County and the city of Pasco pay for all transition costs. The 2018 budget includes many technology improvements, including improvements to our customer service portal that will allow customers to reserve their place in the call queue through a callback feature that will auto-dial the customer when they have reached their place in line. In addition, other technology will be implemented to make it easier to process residential construction permits, grading permits, and other applications and permits. Public employees are critical to the operation of the city and account for the single-largest expenditure of city funds. An additional 6.5 full-time employees are proposed for 2018 for a total of 471, and an additional 46 employees are staffed at CCOM. Also included is $1.2 million for supplemental labor related to capital projects in energy services. The city council and staff work together to develop a capital improvement plan. The plan identifies and prioritizes capital projects and major capital purchases for budget consideration. 60 projects totaling more than $61.8 million across all funding sources are identified in this year's budget, a very similar amount to 2017. Seven of these projects totaling $1.4 million are projects focused on the waterfront district, which continues to be a priority for our council. This includes improvements to riverfront parks and trails, Columbia Point Golf Course, Richland Gateway improvements, and in partnership with other communities, a Wayfinding Signage Program to guide visitors and promote various points of interest in Richland and the surrounding communities. $15 million will be directed for electrical system improvements that will help maintain service reliability, including a substation and advanced metering infrastructure. $11.3 million in other utility improvements such as solid waste disposal capacity improvements, stormwater improvements, including the retrofit program, improvements to wastewater, and automated meter reading and pipeline replacement projects for the Water Division. $9 million is directed for municipal park and facility improvements, including Badger Mountain Trail, Gothles Androlinger Parks, and Horn Rapids Athletic Complex. A total of $25 million is directed to transportation projects, which include pavement preservation and improvements to Swift Boulevard, Center Parkway, Columbia Park Trail East, Dupertail, George Washington Way resurfacing, and Queens Gate Drive Columbia Park Trail improvements. Things are surely happening in Richland. We are poised to begin some longstanding capital projects, such as the Dupertail Bridge, city hall Swift Corridor improvements, and increased pavement preservation. We are excited about the possibilities in connecting our community, encouraging private investment, supporting local businesses, and providing a greater sense of pride. At the same time, this work is underway. The organization continues to improve its internal operations and external communications through various avenues and an increasing social media presence. The city of Richland serves a diverse community, and as responsible stewards of the public's resources, we work hard to serve the critical needs and priorities as identified within our strategic leadership plan. Our fundamental approach emphasizes financial sustainability and accountability. We understand that improving and fostering quality of life in our community drives us. Departments work together to find solutions to ongoing issues, from code enforcement to transportation impacts. And our employees are committed to providing quality services to our customers, the taxpayers of this city. Like every large city, we have plenty of challenges before us, but we also have great opportunities. Let's concentrate on those and build to the future.
City manager Cindy Rents and a great overview of the upcoming projects that are on the horizon in that milestone year, the 60th anniversary coming in 2018. And one thing I learned, that there's a lot of work not only going on on the surface, but underground as well. We sometimes forget about all of the utility work that is needed to be done as well. Let's share with you a few more of the interesting facts that we're learning about all this broad array of services that the city provides throughout the course of the year that we, again, probably aren't as top of mind as maybe they should be. For example, the Richland Police Department recently initiated a very important program, the Screenshot Series Workshop, which educates parents on smartphone and internet safety. How many people have taken advantage of this training since it began just in July of 2017, so just a few months ago? The number is 2,000. Over 2,000 people have already, and that's certainly definitely worth taking advantage of, certainly in today's times. How much funding did the electric utility provide in loans for conservation services in the conservation program in 2016? That number is over $600,000 worth of funding in loans. And an additional $400,000 is included in the 2018 budget, as we know this is an important piece for the citizens. What is the approximate annual cost that the city pays Benton County for jail services? That figure is $1 million. What organization administers the Helping Hands Assistance Program that helps residents with utility bills? That would be the Community Action Council here in the Tri-Cities. How many neighborhood watch programs are active in the city of Richland today? Not quite. Not 100 was the guess, but the answer is 40. And impressively, that number is up from nine just six years ago in 2011. So a lot of neighborhood work coming together to help keep the community safe. With that said, we're going to hear a little bit more on the budget process and the finance side of things as we get toward the budget process as it comes to the council here later this coming year as we prepare for 2018. And to do that, we're going to welcome the Director of Finance for the city of Richland, Brandon Allen, who's going to give us a little bit of an overview. Brandon?
Thank you, Jim. Before I get started on my presentation, we have about a two-minute video that was put together by the Association of Washington Cities that has just a kind of a high-level interview about the budget and how that works with the city, so.
What do you love most about your city? Good parks? Safe streets? Clean water? Ever wonder who pays for those services? Well, it's all of us. That's right. We're the taxpayers, and we pay for those services when you live or shop in a city. These same taxes also go to your schools, the county, the state. In fact, your city only gets a small portion of the property and sales tax collected within its limits. City revenues go to the operating budget, where the council funds things like police and fire, parks and recreation, planning, streets and sidewalks. These services aren't cheap. Police and fire alone can take up half the city budget. What about the city utility systems like water and sewer? Who pays for that? Customers. Their money goes to that service, and it can't be used for anything else, like a new park that residents want. And in case you were thinking that the state and federal government pays for some of those services, well, there's not much money there. Their support of cities has dwindled. Overall, city revenues may increase in strong economic times, but they also decrease when things aren't so good. During the downturn, cities work to minimize impacts on the public. But that creates challenges even when the economy recovers and especially when population grows. Cities are also working to enhance the services residents want, like faster public safety response time, reduce traffic, and better parks. This poses a budget problem today and into the future. Vibrant cities need reliable and stable revenue. We all need to work together to ensure that we can fund the many things we love about our cities.
So, just to start out, looking at the city on a budget perspective, we've got 43 different funds, as you can see here. And there's a broader range of what these funds are used for. So just to start out, you see here, there is what we call the government funds, which there's several in there. The biggest fund in the governmental funds is the general fund. When you think about what the city does, and what most people think the city does, most of that's housed in the general fund. Police services, fire, parks, rec, that type of stuff. If you look at just the police and fire and our public safety, that's about 40% of our budget. If you add community development, such as parks, library, it's 60% of the general fund budget. And so a lot of that, those researches go to those programs. And we also have special revenue funds. Now, these are used when we want to track an activity that has a specified revenue that goes with it. You'll see there's a list of them there. Some of them that are there are criminal justice sales tax, hotel motel tax, our CDBG, which is our Community Development Block Grant, and our home grant programs as well are in those funds, that fund category. Our debt service funds, these are simply just funds that hold the revenues that we use to pay the debt of the city and make those semi-annual or annual payments. Enterprise fund, or sorry, they are. Enterprise fund, or sorry, the capital project funds, these are used to track major projects such as street projects, parts construction, and just general construction of the city, like City Hall Swift Corridor is a fund, would be one of those funds, and one of those funds. And those are the government funds. We have enterprise funds, which some people will know better as maybe a business-type activities, and those are all of our utilities, our electric, our water, all the utilities that we provide as a city. We also have in there the golf course, Columbia Point, and our medical services, ambulance utility is also in those enterprise funds. And then we have our internal service funds. These are funds where we provide services to the other departments within the city. Those will be things like our equipment maintenance and replacement funds. We are self-insured for our health insurance, and so we have a fund that services that as well as workers' compensation and unemployment. And then last, these are trust and agency funds, and these are typically just funds where we are administering a service or something for someone else. We have our pension, our police and our fire pension funds sitting in there. So you can see we have a lot of funds, and several of these funds are required by state mandate. We have to have certain funds. Every city has to have a general fund, and they only can have one general fund. The goal for us is to keep as minimal amount of funds as possible, but still have the efficiency we need to operate the city. And so 43, I don't know if that's a big number, but it's plenty to do. And so you'll see typically with these funds, they operate for the most part as individual little businesses within the city. We can't use what comes from the Energy Services Department to pay for police services. We can't take money from the Industrial Development Fund and use to pay for something that's not related. And so we have a lot of restrictions on the revenues we get. We have to use them for the purposes that's intended. So just as we have several funds, we also have several sources of revenue coming into the city. Our largest source of revenue in the city is charges for services, and this is going to be all the utility charges that happen. That's, that's the bulk of them. There's also charges for other services within the city that are part of that category, but the bulk of it is our utility charges. And again, these revenues, as they come in to like the Energy Services Fund are used in Energy Services to do, pay for infrastructure, pay for the operations of that, of that, that fund and that activity. Our second largest revenue source for the city is taxes, and the bulk of these come into the general fund. As you'll see here, well, this is the property tax. We have, we have three major taxes that come into the city. It's property tax, sales tax, and the utility tax. And these, these make up approximately 98% of the revenues coming into the general fund. And so that's the bulk of what's coming in right here. To start with property taxes, you know, we want to show where, where do your, what does your dollar go when you pay your property taxes? It gets spread out to several different, different agencies. The way that they determine what our property taxes are is the county will assess the value to your property, and then there is a rate that goes against that property value at a rate per thousand. And the more the property is worth, the more the taxes are. You'll, you'll see that the city gets about 25 cents on the dollar. So for every dollar you pay in property taxes, about 25% that comes to the city. The rest goes to the county, school districts, the state, and others. And so we, we receive that piece of that. So by law, with property taxes, and we talked a little bit about this on Tuesday in a public hearing, by law, the city is allowed to increase property taxes every year by a maximum of 1%. That's set by state law. The City of Richland has not done that since 2009. The City of Richland has not, has not increased that, by that 1%. We've kept it at flat, and you'll see that, that our, our rate per thousand has stayed pretty consistent. And it was, Cindy mentioned that in her video, that it hasn't changed much. So the question is, if the city is not raising our property taxes, why am I paying more my property tax, you know, from year to year? And there could be several things. It could just simply be that your property is worth more than it was last year, and the county assessed it for higher value. It could be that the state or the county increased their rates, and the school district may have had an increase in their, in their operating levy, or maybe there was a bond that got passed by the school district. So there's several things that can go into property taxes changing. So it's, you have to kind of look to see who made the change on that. In 2018, just a couple of things that will be affecting property taxes is there was a bond that passed, a school bond that passed for construction that will come into effect in 2018. The state legislature also passed some legislation this last budget cycle that will affect the property tax rates and how that's distributed between the state rate and the, what the schools are allowed to assess on their operating levies. So there'll be some changes in 18. The next slide will talk about our sales tax. And so sales tax in Richland is 8.6%. I think everybody is probably pretty familiar with that. And just like property tax, the city gets just a fraction of that money that's paid to sales tax. So in this case, for every dollar spent in a taxable transaction in the City of Richland, the city gets eight and a half tenths of a cent, so almost a penny on the dollar. Not a lot. It ends up being about 10% of the total tax collected comes to the City of Richland. The majority of that goes to the state, and then the county also receives some as well. So also, you'll see on here, in addition, we receive a little bit of the criminal justice sales tax. That was, if you remember, that was a voter-approved increase for a temporary period of time. County gets about 60% of that, and the rest of the 40% is distributed by population to the cities, and that's used for public service, or public safety, I'm sorry. That's, that's, that's one of those restricted revenues that we only can spend on a certain activity. And then finally, we have utility tax. We don't have a slide for this one, but utility tax is the tax the city imposes on utilities that do business within the city. That includes our own utilities, so we tax our own utilities, and those funds are in the, are put in the general fund for general use. That's our third, third highest tax. And so that's generally where the money is coming from in the general fund. Now, just looking at the budget, we start our budget in May or June, and it's the rest of the year to get this thing taken care of. And it includes in September, or sorry, in November, we're not done yet. And the results of that, of that work, I brought one with me, I didn't want to carry it up here, it's too big, is this little document right here. This is our 17 budget, and 18 is going to be going to council in November, and so to get approved. But this budget document is, if you want to know what the city is, is a great place to start. It talks about all our funds, what's going in and out of those funds. There's also a lot of explanation about what kind of fund does what, and what revenue comes from where. There's a lot of explanation in that budget document that'll help you understand the finances of the city and how we get our money and how we spend our money. And so, very good, a good document to start with. It's just some light reading if you can't sleep at night. So once it's approved by the council, it'll be certified by the county, and then we put it on our website. And we think we have a slide that shows our website, and I can't read that from here, so I'm going to look at my cheat sheet here. If you get on the website, this is the front page of the website. You just hover over Departments, Administrative Services, Finance, and then click on the Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. My eyesight's getting bad. And it'll take you to the website, or the page that has it. So you've got budgets and capital improvement plans since 2013 on there. There's also the video from last year's town hall was on there if you want to watch that. And then there's also some additional links. So the, in closing, the budget, if the budget tells the story of what we're going to do and what we want to do, we have what's called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and that tells you what we did do. That's our year-end report. It's audited by the State Otters Office and tells you what we did. And that's also on here as well, so I would encourage you to go out and see that. You can see what we, what we planned and what did we do is all there. And so I appreciate your time this evening, and I'll turn the time back over to Jim.
Brandon, thank you for taking the time to share with us some, obviously, it's a lot of information to get out in a shorter period of time, and it's very easily understood, right, everybody? We know it all right up here. At this point, we want to open the opportunity for questions from our members of our audience. We've already had some submitted via social media, and so our illustrious executive leadership team has just been waiting to stand up and answer some of these questions. And so we're going to get started, and what I'd ask, I've got a few that I'm going to lead off with, but if you have a question you'd like to ask relating to the budget, relating to next year's strategic plan, the city improvement plan, just we'll try and get to you, as many as we can, and we will direct the questions to the appropriate member of the leadership team to answer them. And the first one that I want to share has to do with the new city hall that is under construction, that is underway just over here down the street, and I'd like to ask Joe to address that question. Joe, how's, how's, how's everything going so far? I know it's only been a few weeks.
It has only been a few weeks, and thank you for the question, yeah. Before I take a minute and tell you where the project is going, I might take a minute and tell you where it's been and how it got here, and it tells you a little bit about how our city is run, I think. So I've been fortunate enough to be with the city for almost two decades now and have been involved in various strategic planning efforts and downtown initiatives. And probably 15 years ago, we as a, as a leadership team, along with council and citizens, were thinking about the future of Swift Boulevard, Swift Corridor. And, and we were looking at the various ownerships along the street and, and different opportunities that we should be looking at in the future. And so we developed some strategic partnerships with Cadlec, with the Department of Energy, with GSA, with some private property owners, and we developed this plan. And the plan included the expansion of the city's swimming pool, the renovation expansion of the city's library. It allowed a really large and beautiful expansion of the hospital. It got us out of the way. We sold some property along Swift Corridor for private development, and that's where Dupus Boomers and Taco Time and, and other retail opportunities are. And it also identified that the parking lot serving the federal building that was controlled by GSA was too big for their needs. And we knew that we were in the market for a city hall. Our, our buildings are aging, and we have some crumbling infrastructure and some non-ADA compliant buildings, and it was time for us to shop for a new facility. And we wanted to stay downtown, and so that was our spot, that's what we identified. It took us 15 years to acquire that property. It took a literal act of Congress to get there. But we, we closed on the property last year and have started construction now, and we have a big hole in the ground. And, you know, the obvious benefits of the project are we're combining three buildings into one, we'll have all of our services under one roof, and it'll be easy for citizens to accomplish multiple objectives. The city council chambers will be accessible and beautiful and expandable for large meetings so that when the room overflows on popular topics, we can open some doors up and everybody's in the lobby, and everybody has sort of an equal seat to hear your city council. So Mayor Thompson said some really nice things about the competent staff. I want to return the favor and say, you know, this doesn't happen without the competent leadership of, of council and bringing a citizenry together and working together with staff to make something like this happen and, and to have a vision. And so we've been working on this for 15 years. The city has a plan. We have multiple plans that we follow, and because we're so diligent and conservative and frugal and visionary, we can pull this kind of thing off. So we'll be under construction for a year and a half. We'll open the building in the spring of 2019. And the really cool thing about that project is that we're going to leave our current city council chambers and the city manager's building, and we'll demolish those. We'll clear the site, and we'll make it ready for redevelopment. So we'll either sell or lease that land and look forward to future Dupus Boomers or other really cool opportunities.
Thank you very much, Joe. Onto, and it was addressed in some of the, the video and some of our topics, and that's relating to the car tab tax that goes into effect in 2018. Relative to street improvements, Mr. Ogalski, what, what kinds of things can we expect in the coming year? I know there are some currently in the mix right now, but what, what does 2018 bring about in that area?
Yeah, well, specific to the, the car tab program, that'll be the first year that the city will begin collecting that revenue. And we're, and we've worked with the Department of Licensing at the state level to estimate the number of cars and what kind of revenue we can expect, and we think that will be about $875,000. In 2018, 100% of that will go into our street resurfacing program. Because most people are aware, the two purposes of our transportation benefit district are, are that pavement preservation program for the majority of the funds, and then to finish whatever money is needed to, to complete the funding package for the Dupertail Bridge. We're stacking the, the project such that the, if, or the amount of money that is needed from the car tabs for the bridge is at the tail end of the project, and so in this first year of collection, all of that money will go into resurfacing. And in a, in a typical year now with our, with our current budget level, we resurface about 12 miles, 12 lane miles. So on a typical two-lane street, that would translate to six miles, and actually, I just misstated that. We usually, we can usually do 17 miles in a, in a typical year now, and this new funding or this $875,000 next year will allow us to expand that by 12 miles and get up to close to 30 lane miles of streets done. So we do that with a couple of different techniques. People have seen this pretty thin sand slurry-type treatment that usually goes on local streets all the way to a complete repaving, and, and we use a, a technical resource and some engineering tools to choose which, which treatments get applied to which streets.
And do you have a priority of which, of how, are those already set, or is that also in the process?
So that's, that's an ongoing process. Every two years, we do a complete measurement, a rating of the street condition of every street in Richland. We have a, we have a database that calculates the anticipated decay in the condition of those streets, and then, and then that same program helps us choose the most cost-effective treatment to apply to the given state of a street. And so as a street decays, when it's close to new, when it's starting to decay, a less expensive treatment can preserve it and, and maintain it and, and make a more cost-effective program by applying that low-cost treatment. And then as it decays into a worse condition, it requires more expensive treatments. So we use this, we use this computer system, and that, that's ultimately back-checked by our, by our engineers doing their own field surveys to, to, to choose those treatments. So I guess, going back to your original question, is that we don't yet exactly have our lists refined for 2018. That happens, that happens after each year's previous treatments, where we go back and reassess the system. So between now and the end of the year, we will develop our, our list for next year and then project forward from there.
Excellent. Thank you, Pete. A question that came in relative to crime in our community, and this one's for Chief Skinner. It seems like there has been more interest, instances of car prowls in the area. The question is, what's being done to help with this issue?
Well, we certainly have seen an increase in car prowls, and one of the things the City of Richland we've done at the police department is try and embrace who we are when it comes to criminal activity. The two things that I would tell you is, number one, of the three major cities here, we have the lowest violent crime rate and the lowest overall crime rate of the three. The violent crime rate hovers at about 26 per thousand, and the NIBR's reported, which is National Incident-Based Reporting System, hovers right around 55 per thousand, and that's lower than, than all the other, the other two major cities that we have. Having said that, when we embrace who we are, we embrace the fact that we have property crimes here, and car prowls are one of those. This summer, we had a situation over a two-week period of time, we had almost 100 car prowls, which completely blew our stats out of the water. The, the, the good news is, is because we have car prowls as one of our crime reduction goals under a stratified model of how we police, which is us identifying projects that we want to undertake and assigning accountabilities on, on running those projects, we got our arms around the problem fairly, fairly quickly, and were able to identify who was committing those crimes and, and took care of, of some of those things. So we, we've embraced who we are, and we've got really, really strong stratified strategies on how we're going to solve those problems.
Thank you very much, Chief. We have a question from a member of our audience. Hello?
Hello. My name is Kelsey Edwardson. I have a question about, the state just passed a new, legislature just passed a new solar incentive to pay for 50% of the capital cost for all solar residential. I know the last incentive, the money was given straight to the utility to dole out, and that was a little less transparent in terms of how it went out, because I just installed solar six months ago and was told that I wasn't going to get any production payment until I started getting it. So my question is, I've been told that the city council is considering not participating in the new incentive because it's the choice of the utility to participate or not, when it would in fact benefit all of the residents to be able to install solar. When batteries come down in price, then they can go off-grid and increase the resiliency of our community.
Who would like that? Mr. Hammond?
That one's mine. First of all, there's, there's some fact things that I would love to get with you after, afterwards, and because there's some real misalignments in what I'm hearing from you and what, and what I know is happening, not only from the state and the, and the WSU Energy Office. The WSU, the, the short answer to your question is, our Energy Services Department staff is evaluating what the true implications of the change from what we call the legacy investment cost recovery program at the state over to the new one. We have about 90 existing legacy programs. The reason you were, and others were... The reason you were, and others were, weren't able to add to that is because that is paid for from a state credit, a state tax credit. And we had reached the max, max of that in 2016. So, we had sort of put a stop to that, that program, and then, we were involved with others to try to, to figure out and, and help form with the legislation that got passed this last year. There are a lot of implications to it. And part of it is understanding how the, the new agency, WSU Energy Office, will administer this. So, that's why we're taking our time at a staff level. Council has not been even introduced with this concept yet. We have a utility advisory committee that we've, that we've talked to them, just introduced it. We've told them the basic thing we're doing to try to research it. And we're coming back then in November, and then, we'll come back to council after that. The intention, from my perspective, is to open up this program back in the first of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. And back to our screen for another question that has been submitted via social media. Richland receives criminal justice sales tax. What are some of the programs or projects that these funds are being used for? And I think this is Chief Skinner, and Chief Huntington are going to tag-team this one.
Yeah, the Tom and Chris Show. So, even though we call it the Criminal Justice Sales Tax, by statute, it's criminal, it's a sales tax that can be used for public safety enhancement in your community. So, I'm really, really proud of the fact that the city of Richland took the RCW at its literal meaning, and found ways to use your tax dollars to enhance public safety in this community, not just looking at criminal justice types of things, or the normal criminal justice types of things that you would see. From a police department perspective, and I was involved in building the budget, we built a very, very conservative budget that we needed to last for ten years. We didn't want to lay people off in eight years, seven, eight, and nine, so we were very conservative. We were able to hire some police officers. We were able to hire some support staff. We were able to buy some much-needed aged equipment that are in our cars, known as the MDT's, or the Mobile Data Terminals. But more importantly, instead of just hiring people and not seeing the value sometimes for the number of bodies that we put on the street, we've implemented some fantastic programs, and we've built the capacity to be able to do some things that I believe this police department should do. And one of those things is, for instance, the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. You saw a slide up here that talks about two thousand people reached through the screenshot, screenshot series. Most of them are parents that are concerned about the internet connectivity their children are having today. And of, of all of our sexually abused, or sexually, or the, or the children that are being preyed upon by sexual predators, ninety percent of all of them got introduced to that, to that victimization through some kind of online media or electronics. So, it's really important. So, programs are important for us, and we, we've got, we could go on and on, and on, and talk about the wonderful things we're doing with those tax dollars. Thank you for saying yes in August of 2014. And for the next ten years, Richland is going to be a better place as a result of it.
I would, I would add to what Chief Skinner had to say, that I'm very proud of the fact that we have such a strong working relationship in public safety in the city of Richland. There's not a, a cops versus firefighters thing going on here, other than the friendly banter that we have. One of the primary things that we'll be doing with the Criminal Justice Sales Tax funding in our 2018 budget is adding a data analyst position. This will allow us to really come into the modern era of running a, a fire department in terms of being community-driven, being responsive to what are the needs in this community, not just what the state tells us we have to do, and the feds tell us we have to do, but what are those things that the community needs from us? How do we measure them? How do we respond to them? And how do we improve that service? And that, this position will be a key piece to making that happen as we move into the future.
Thank you, Chiefs. We have time, I think, for one more studio question, or one audience question, before we have to adjourn. And I, I will point out that all of the members of the leadership team will be staying on for a few minutes after. If we don't get to your question, we do have to get out right at seven-thirty with the televised portion of this. We will continue afterward, if you'd like to stick around and direct one of these questions. Sir, your question, please.
I'd like to, to address the issue. Yesterday, I got six robo-calls from various people, and I'm getting really tired of answering the phone. And it's the point where I'm paying thirty-five dollars a month for telephone service, and it's a detriment. Most of the time, we answer the phone, it's a robo-call. And I want to know if we can do anything to stop that. I'm on the federal do-not-call list. I've called the city of, the police department, and they don't seem to be able to help with that issue. And I'm wondering if there's any way we can decrease that.
That's an interesting question, and I'm not sure it's one that we're equipped tonight to answer. But what we'll do is, we'll defer that. I would assume a phone company-type of question, or what is it? A state utilities commission that oversees? But it's something I don't know that the city has oversight for. Is that right, city manager? Okay, all right. All right, well, sorry we couldn't address that question. I think we have reached a point where we need to have our concluding remarks from city manager Rents, who's going to tell us a little bit about what's coming up next as the budget process moves forward toward 2018, and some of these projects that we've heard about tonight. So, please welcome back Cindy.
Thank you, Jim. You're probably all wondering, what are the next steps? The next step to our, our budget process is a public hearing and a first reading of the budget adoption ordinance that council will consider, and that will be on November seventh. Then, if that all goes as expected, or they agree to that, then the second reading will be November twenty-first. The budget is made available to the public through open meetings, by televised regular council meetings, and on the city's website. If you need help finding any of those things, let us know. Copies of the proposed budget document is available at the Richland City Clerk's Office, and also, online by visiting our website. This meeting tonight is another way that we provide opportunities for our citizenry to engage. I thank you very much for coming out and doing that. The more you know about your budget and your city, the better off the whole community is. So, again, I want to thank you for that. I hope you enjoyed this evening. I hope you've learned something. I hope that you can take back some tidbits and share that with others. I've learned more. This is a great place to live. This is a great place to be. And I am daily impressed with all the work that comes out of our city staff for our community. So, again, thank you very much for coming tonight.
And thank you, city manager Cindy Rents, and the members of the executive leadership team for taking time, extending your day, and sharing your wisdom with the residents of the city of Richland. Again, for our audience members who have additional questions